Happy National 4H Month in Finney County, everybody. We are so pleased. My name is Janet Harkness. I am one of the 4H agents for the West Plains Extension District, which is Scott and Finney County. In Finney County, we are 149 members strong. We have 38 enrolled volunteers, plus many, 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 many more that volunteer and help our youth. And our program this year, well, all of Kansas 4H, is focusing on making our youth beyond ready. Beyond ready, beyond the 4H program, ready for life, ready to take on any and every challenge that we have coming their way. And our youth are participating on the local level, regional, state, and we have youth from Finney County attending national 4H events and representing southwest Kansas. So, we just want to say thank you for your continued support of everything related to extension. We are so proud to have our partnership with Finney County. One of our highlight programs for this 4H year was the West Plains 4H Youth Leadership Academy, which the kids sat in in March in your meeting, learned quite a bit. I just, I have to share a couple things. You were talking taxes and budgets and getting enough money in, and when we debriefed, one of the youth is like, I asked, you know, what did you learn? He's like, I learned the county has unlimited funds and they can do anything. I said, no, 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 no. It is limited if, if people do not pay their taxes and help support the county and the good works that we do. So, thank you very much for being open to them, for taking time on your breaks to visit with them. They learned so much. Our graduation ceremony was two weeks ago, and all 12 youth graduated. They worked on four different community issue challenge projects. And if you're interested in that, I can send you digital files of their projects. They came up with a data walk on all the information they learned from you and through the Finney Health Coalition, and put that together with a sustainability plan to solve some of these problems with a specific call to action for youth to get involved. So, thank you so much for taking your time with that. I did bring two of our 4H members from Finney County to speak with you to hear their story on how 4H has impacted their lives, their young lives. So, I'd like to ask Hudson Fryman to come up first, and then we'll have Taylor Knoll come up.
Morning, young man. Make sure you introduce yourself for the viewing public.
Hello. Hello, my name is Hudson Fryman. I'm 13 years old. I've been 4H for five years. I'm part of, I'm part of the Wide Awake 4H Club, and I've been involved in photography, sheep, and visual arts projects throughout those five years. I'm part of the 4H Council for my third year now, helping, in helping the 4H community. I enjoy drawing and wanted to draw an option to be voted on this past year. Thinking of the theme of the past year, Deep Roots and Dusty Boots, I wanted the boot to be like a tree grown with roots out of it. From, and the roots represent different options 4H and FFA have to offer. Background settings set as western Kansas, dust and dirt view with the sunset. Being part of the 4H has taught me how to work part of a group, working on giving talks in front of people, leadership and community service. Having livestock projects require a lot of dedication, and the animals are completely dependent on the care I provide them, and they perform in the ring based on how I've prepped them for the shows. I want to thank you and part of helping myself and others be able to be creative, explore new experiences, build relationships, leadership skills, most importantly, be part of the community that strives to, that makes us better.
Well done. Don't go anywhere. These commissioners may have a question for you, sir. Commissioners?
I don't have a question, but is Kirby your dad?
Yes.
I coached him in baseball, and then your grandpa Dudley was my football coach when I was in junior high.
Yeah.
Still holds the record for the shot put at the high school.
He throws that in more than I do.
Thank you, Dudley.
Thank you.
Please announce, young lady, for the viewing public.
My name is Taylor Knoll. I'm thankful to get this opportunity to talk about my 4H career. At seven years old, this journey began with my two sheep Sheldon and Penny, and my two goats Colton and Abby. Four months before my first fair, I found myself outside my house with two sheep that I had been looking forward to getting, and two goats which had just randomly showed up at my, showed up at my house, or at least that's the way I remember it. Turns out, my uncle had gotten me these two goats and told me I was to show them at the county fair. Now, seven-year-old me was not very happy about it because I wanted nothing to do with goats. I absolutely despise them. But I was stuck with them, so I had no choice. All summer, I spent countless hours with these animals, and I was slowly falling in love with the goats that I despised. Flash forward to about a month before the fair, I decided that I wanted to do baking as well. Now, to me, this sounded like a great idea, but to my mom and her kitchen, it probably wasn't. But my mom didn't say anything about it, and instead she helped me and taught me how to bake. Baking is the one thing I have done every year since I have been in 4H. A month goes by, and there I am, going into the ring with my showmanship goat, Colt. I didn't know exactly what I was doing, but I had an idea as I would always watch the older kids in the ring and think about how I wanted to be just like them. But little did I know, I was about to win the junior goat showmanship as a first-time shower. When the judge first announced that I was the grand champion showman, I was full of excitement. Now, I don't fully remember everything from that day, but I do remember three powerful words that the judge told me. Never stop showing. These are very powerful words, if you look at them in a deeper meaning, because it relates to every single person in this room. Never give up. A statement that relates to everyday life, whether that be in the show ring or just trying to get through a day. Never give up. Now, here I am, 17 years old, and coming up on my 10th and final year in 4H. These past nine years have been the best and the worst of my life. From being selected as a Finney County 4H ambassador, to not doing as well as I thought I would, or even getting put outside of my comfort zone. These things have all strengthened me and are what made my 4H career so memorable. If it wasn't for 4H, I wouldn't be standing here today, or showing at the state fair, or teaching so many kids about 4H, or even getting the leadership and responsibility skills that I have. 4H has made such an impact on my life, and I will forever be grateful for the skills that I have possessed. Thank you to everyone that has supported me through these years, especially my mom and dad, who have never given up on me, Aunt Janet, who has seen a spark in me since the day she first started in Finney County. Thank you.
All right, you have to identify mom and dad.
My mom and dad is Andrea and Shane Knoll. My mom's right here, and then my dad. So, yeah.
Questions, commissioner?
Is Harold your grandpa?
No.
No.
Al. Greg. Greg is my grandpa, yeah.
Okay, Greg is my cousin.
Oh, really?
Greg's dad, my mom, are brother and sister.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's how you got elected. Questions, commissioners?
Oh, well done, Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
The item on the agenda is to proclaim National 4H Month here in Finney County. I would like to read the proclamation and then ask the commissioners for a motion to approve and I would sign. And then, assuming that it is acceptable to the commission, we'd like to get some pictures with these young 4Hers this morning. So, here it goes. Whereas this year's National 4H Month theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that 4H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with skills for future while meeting them where they are today. 4H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting 6 million youth across the country. 4H programs are delivered by the Cooperative Extension System, a community of more than 100 public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation that provides experiences for young people to learn by doing. 4H is in every city and county in the United States and helps 6 million youth become engaged, successful, and independent. 4H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experimental and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. Expanding from its strong agricultural roots, 4H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the United States Department of Agriculture, National Institute of Food, and Agriculture 4H Program. Therefore, I, Jerry Schultz, Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Finney County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as National 4H Month throughout Finney County, Kansas, and encourage all our citizens to recognize 4H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime, dated October 2025. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve a proclamation designated in October 2025 as 4H Month in Finney County and authorize the chair to sign.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'll sign. Motion carries. Let's get a picture. Thank you, commissioners. It's a good investment of time. This morning, next on our agenda is to hear from exempting some property on sewer district number four. Morning, Derek.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. On September 2nd, 2025, the county commission held a public hearing on the creation of sewer district number four and voted to create the district. Resolution 23-2025 was adopted and authorizes the creation of the district and the authority to levy assessments upon properties in the district. On September 29, 2025, the county received a request from the attorney representing Finney County Rural Water District Number One, indicating the Rural Water District owns a property within the sewer district. The property is used only for a wellhouse and that it would not benefit from the sewer district since it does not have any drains, septic tanks, or other waste connections. Therefore, the Rural Water District is requesting the property owned by the district be exempted from assessments pursuant to KSA 19-27172. So, there's two alternatives from the governing body to choose from. Alternative number one, approve the Rural Water District request to exempt the property they own that is within sewer district number four. And alternative number two, reject the Rural Water District request to exempt the property they own that is within sewer district four and provide staff with further direction. It is staff's recommendation to approve the Rural Water District request to exempt the property they own that is within sewer water district number four. And you guys can see there's a map attached, and there is no fiscal impact to this project.
Questions for the administrator? Sir?
Derek, you're new to the game like I am, but over the years, I live in the area covered by sewer district three. And over the years, there's been property that, in district three, that is nonusable for other than wellhouses, ballfield, and a tennis court. The tennis court is owned by the homeowner association, but the other properties are owned by Delmar Towns, and Delmar owned the property at the tennis courts and that. And as my understanding, years back, when that sewer district was created, he came before this commission and asked a waiver of being assessed the fees and was denied. I personally think this is a valid request, as well as the others, but, and I, I'll, I'll make the recommendation to prove it. However, I would ask that maybe if, when you have time to get with Dory and discuss those properties, and let me know, and I will get back with those two property owners to see if they need to do the same thing.
Absolutely.
I know they have addressed the commission, but it didn't go anywhere. It, it didn't get approved. So, that's my only contention on this.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at sewer water district number three and get back to you on that.
Yes.
All right, I will not be voting on this one. As everyone can tell, my office wrote the letter requesting the exemption, and Mr. Hanson from the water district is here. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Hanson? All right. Then commissioners, you'll have to do this without me. Vice Chairman German, would you conduct the vote, please?
Yes, do we have a motion?
Yes, I would move that we approve the RWD request to exempt the property they own that is within sewer district number four.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, with no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Chairman Schultz abstains. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Perry, do you have any other business? All right, thank you for coming. Next on our agenda, we'll hear from?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
It's 9:00 AM. Tell us.
All right, so, I think economic development stepped out anyway. No, she didn't. We have a 9 o'clock scheduled. Lana, can you stay and see the Rep. Tellis presentation? Very good. This item isn't on our agenda, but this is a culmination of quite a bit of work that the county has done, resulting in a binder of recommendations to us with regard to oversight of staff analysis and organizational review of our county. Who is joining us today by Zoom? Madam Clerk?
Michelle Ferguson. And James Frick.
All right. Michelle and James, can you hear us this morning?
We can, yes.
James, good morning.
Morning.
All right. Audio all works. I'll turn the floor over to you for overview and presentation of the final report from Rep. Tellis.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Thanks so much for allowing us to present to you this morning. Jim's going to share a PowerPoint that'll just walk us through some of the highlights of the analysis that our team conducted. As, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, this is really the culmination of several months of work and engagement on behalf of the staff and a number of the officials across the county. And we certainly commend the organization for, for being willing to take on an effort like this. In terms of what we want to speak about briefly with you this morning, we'll share a little bit, just to ground everybody, and the purpose of the engagement. We'll share high level, some of the observations and key recommendations from the study, and then certainly allow time for questions as any of you may have. Just very briefly, in terms of overview for the purpose and approach that we took to this engagement. As you all know, the county entered into an agreement to conduct this operational scan to really take a look at service provision across all of the departments, as well as staffing levels, and really assure that there's alignment around the priorities of this commission and key initiatives throughout the organization. Our work focused on identifying opportunities that would really enhance the overall capacity, internal capacity within the organization, to effectively live out those initiatives and key projects and priorities. In terms of our approach to this work, we take both a qualitative and a quantitative approach. We, we really try to, to get a well-rounded understanding of how work happens within each of the county departments, and we do that through a variety of ways. One of which is to spend time onsite with staff in their, in their workplaces to talk with them about what they think is working well and what some of the challenges are to meeting expectations of the commission, as well as of the community. And then we also spend quite a bit of time analyzing data that's available. And as you'll see in this report, as Jim outlined some of the key recommendations, having available data to really identify clear recommendations and service levels is a real critical area, opportunity area, for the county moving forward. In addition, we also look at best practice research from other similar type organizations, and certainly peer community data, which is also included in the report. Our report culminated, or our work culminated in a, in a report that was, the draft of which was reviewed by a steering committee that was comprised of some county staff, as well as some elected officials. And we reviewed that draft report with the steering committee, made modifications, and then issued the final report, along with an implementation and action plan. That really is the step-by-step approach to making progress on the recommendations included in our report that was delivered to the county at the beginning of October. And knowing that there's a, there has been a leadership transition, we see this work as really an opportunity to set the new administrator up for success and give, give new leadership an opportunity to have this assessment and really prioritize recommendations based on the other priorities that he sees in the organization as he begins his tenure. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim to talk a little bit about our observations and recommendations.
Thank you, Michelle. So, just on a high level, you know, throughout this engagement, staff were clearly invested and showed that they take pride in their work and the impact that they have on the community. And this is a strength that will serve the county well moving forward. You know, there, there are some significant issues that are facing, staff capacity being one of, one of the primary challenges. And the labor market presents challenges to how the county will approach, be able to fill that staff capacity need. And so, there's going to be, some creative problem solving is going to be needed to solve those capacity issues moving forward. And those potential solutions will include, excuse me, building partnerships with neighboring organizations and jurisdictions, leveraging technology to streamline processes and automate tasks, and then, of course, developing a new comprehensive recruitment strategy. As Michelle mentioned, the transition in the county administrator position is an inflection point, an opportunity to reflect and reimagine the future direction of the organization. And again, also, as Michelle mentioned, you know, we did use county data when available, as much as possible, to inform our understanding of current operations and identify opportunities for improvement. However, during the course of the assessment, it did become clear that additional detailed and reliable data is needed moving forward to help the new administrator and the commissioners to, to be able to perform a more comprehensive staffing analysis moving forward. Overall, in our report, we kind of lumped our recommendations into what we call opportunity areas, and we really identified seven key opportunity areas, which are long-term and strategic planning, strategic partnerships, budgeting and financial planning, recruitment and retention, standard operating procedures and work planning, technology, and then organizational development. And as we go through, we'll use these kind of as our guide when we talk about our recommendations at a high level. So, first, in terms of strategic planning, the, the report offers a recommendation to adopt a strategic plan. The governance model that you all adopted previously is a good start, but by adopting a strategic plan, the county can provide additional guidance to the budget development process. A strategic plan will also aid future decision-making, and the county will be able to prioritize initiatives based upon specific goals. And then, once it's adopted, the management practices should also be tied with the established strategic objectives to make sure staff work is aligned with the goals that you're trying to achieve. Addressing the staff capacity and implementing the goals in the strategic plan will also, you know, will also need to rely on strategic partnerships, and these partnerships will be a key role moving forward in terms of coordinating services and identifying opportunities for shared services. And among these, we wanted to highlight the relationship with Garden City as being an important relationship to cultivate moving forward. This is a vital relationship that needs to be actively managed. The memorands, memorandums of understanding and interlocal agreements, we found are, are out of date, and so this is a prime opportunity to update those moving forward. And then also identify other areas where there could be future collaboration with Garden City, such as a joint planning approach, emergency medical services, GIS as a shared service, and then sewer district maintenance and operations. In addition to outside strategic partnerships, we found there's an opportunity to position internal service departments, such as human resources, information technology, and GIS, to be internal strategic partners as well. And this can be done through the creation of service level agreements that can help proactively identify and help solve issues. And as a part of this, the report recommends prioritizing hiring an assistant county administrator to help oversee these internal service departments and ensure that the service level agreements are put into place and are actively managed. And then also, by prioritizing hiring the assistant county administrator, it will help reduce the span of control for the new county administrator, so policy decisions can be focused on and implemented appropriately. In terms of budgeting and financial planning, we found that more centralized budgeting support is needed for individual departments. A lot of purchases are kind of being made in silos, and I'll talk about software purchases in a little bit as an example of that. And so, a way that we can create more centralized budgeting support is to develop long-term financial plans to help guide spending. And specifically, we highlighted the need for improved capital improvement planning, technology purchasing, and then also fleet replacement. As mentioned previously, staff capacity is one of the most significant issues facing the county, which is highlighted by the number of vacancies that you're currently experiencing. The latest data that we had had full-time vacancies at 48 and part-time vacancies at eight. And addressing these vacancies will require a holistic recruitment strategy and approach. The salary study that is currently being conducted, or was recently conducted, will help, but more will be needed, again, that creative problem solving, the use of technology to create efficiencies, and an enhanced recruitment strategy that kind of expands the boundaries, will definitely be needed to help fill these vacancies, but also kind of create efficiencies within the office to help staff operate in, in the presence of the vacancies as well. And among the positions that we found to prioritize hiring, again, is the assistant county administrator, as I previously mentioned, and also the assistant director of EMS, who can help with training and recruitment on that, for that department. And finally, we found an opportunity to enhance the performance appraisal approach to provide constructive feedback to, to current staff as well. So, again, one opportunity to address current staff capacity issues is to ensure that staff are doing work as effectively and efficiently as possible. And one way to help guide staff is through the development of standard operating procedures. We found that policies and processes are not always fully documented. And so, establishing standard operating procedures can help preserve institutional knowledge of existing staff, help with cross-training of staff to kind of fill the voids that are being left with vacancies, and ensure consistent and efficient performance of, of tasks moving forward. SOPs should be developed in each department, but would specifically benefit, as we found, the appraiser's office, as well as the emergency management department. For maintenance activities, additional work planning is also needed to help guide staff, and creating annual, monthly, and weekly work plans, create a shared understanding of desired service levels, and ensure maintenance activities are of desired service levels, and ensure maintenance activities are done in a reliable and consistent manner. And it can also help improve capital improvement planning to ensure that your assets, your long-term infrastructure assets are maintained and, and have the longest useful life possible before needing repairs or replacement. In terms of technology, there's, the county is already engaged, Imagine IT, to do some evaluation and also kind of share some of the services being presented. And this is definitely an opportunity to develop a long-term IT structure and leadership plan. Among that, as they, as they continue with their one-year engagement is, an enhanced IT governance approach is definitely needed. Currently, software programs are kind of being purchased in silos. And when that occurs, they may not communicate with other programs. And so to ensure that everything communicates effectively so as not to disrupt workflows, having an overarching IT governance structure to make sure that the software purchases can be implemented and are communicated appropriately with other departments will be necessary. This governance approach also establishes a standard process for evaluating and improving software purchases to make sure that what you are purchasing can help benefit the departments to the maximum ability. And our last area is organizational development. You know, we noted a strategic approach to training and leadership development is needed that will just help make, make sure that existing staff are growing appropriately in their jobs and creating the future leaders of tomorrow. There's an opportunity to enhance internal and external communication as well. You know, we need to make sure that, that internally, departments such as positioning the internal service departments, we need to make sure that they're communicating effectively to help each other out and creating a culture of collaboration and coordination. And then there's a lot of external partners, whether it's through emergency management or as we mentioned, the strategic partnerships with Garden City and others, that will definitely need to be monitored and make sure that affected, that communication is effective between all those organizations. There is also an opportunity to relocate staff within the organ structure to enhance coordination and collaboration. Specifically, throughout the engagement, we highlighted noxious weeds and fairgrounds. Both of these departments, there's, there was some confusion about how they fit into the organizational structure. And so by combining them into their, to larger respective departments can help eliminate any confusion and help, you know, align staff responsibilities moving forward. With that, I just wanted to cover our report at a high level, and we can open it up to any questions from the commissioners as, as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions of our Michelle and James? Who, James, you probably did the meat of this work and Michelle supervised, if I understand your structure. And once again, I'd like to tell both of you that we really appreciate the quality of the work that's demonstrated in your presentation, especially the written material.
Thank you.
That was well done. So commissioners, questions?
I don't have any questions. I have comments at the end.
I don't have any questions.
No questions, thank you.
All right, now we're back to comments.
Thank you both for the intense report and the, the future to-do list that we have. I, I think the committee has recommended, if I'm correct, Dorian, Kevin, that the committee continues working with the county administrator as we move forward through this list, because I, I think the committee may think that although your recommendations are on some of the requests within the next six, eight, 12 months, the committee may desire to have things done sooner than latter. And I appreciate the report on the strategic planning. This commission made several attempts, or made attempts this year to do strategic planning, and I think we need to do that strategic planning earlier. We, I believe we did that in like April or May, which was too late in the process, I think. And it might be who of this commission to, if the county administrator's comfortable either doing it himself or bringing an outside person in to help us, because I don't think we've ever really engaged in a true strategic, strategic planning process. And I, I appreciate the comments in there because it, it is well, well done. And I also appreciate the comments about investing in leadership training. I'm a firm believer that to have a great organization, you have to have a great leadership to develop that culture that will bring in good and retain good people. So I, I appreciate those comments. I am concerned we have 48 openings. You, you did make mention, and I agree that it's more than the pay, so we have a lot of work to do. But I also think the commission needs to look at, some of those openings have been for a long time. They've been, they've been open for a long time. And I think when we get into the budget process or the finance committee, probably should look at, are these positions actually needed? Or are there positions elsewhere that are needed? The span of control was concerning of me for the county administrator. When you looked at the original, taking out the assistant county administrator, Robert, Gary, and now Derek, you would have your hands full. Span of control, I'm a firm believer in my experience in law enforcement, and I believe Commissioner Baskey would concur with this, should be isolated where we don't have someone monitoring 15, 16 different groups. So I, I think there's some work there, Derek, for you to look at from this report, and I think through the committee. So, Mr. Chair, I would ask that the committee continues to work on this and, and that we don't disband the committee.
All right, other comments?
Chairman, I really disagree with that, just off the cuff. I would prefer not to have a small committee continuing with this and maybe have some work sessions with the entire commission and the administration. I would ask, Michelle and James, do you have any thoughts on that?
I would say that one of the most important things that we've seen in terms of successful implementation of the recommendations is that there is transparency in what recommendations are implemented, what the timelines are, and who's responsible. Certainly, there's an opportunity for the new administrator to spend some time, I would imagine, with this report and with his staff and his colleagues to really take the implementation plan that we provided and prioritize that based on your upcoming budget process and what's feasible, given his assessment of the capacity in the organization. And, and then there's really a partnership that I, we would believe needs to happen between the administrator and the leadership of the organization and the commission in terms of establishing the priorities. Obviously, a lot of the work, the day-to-day work of implementation will be within the staff's purview to take ownership of, with oversight from the commission. So regardless of what the specific structure might look like, ensuring that there's routine communication about implementation, we would believe is one of the keys to implementation success long-term.
Very good. I'm gonna put Derek on the spot and ask him for his comments of his review of Raffatellis' work, sir.
So after reviewing the report on a surface level, having really got to dig into it deep with staff, I'm anxious to meet with the steering committee and kind of go through the recommendations and the actions plans presented. You know, you know, we're looking at various things from strategic planning, recruitment and retention, SOPs, and that's already something, we've already identified, just in my two weeks here, of something that needs to be updated. So I definitely want to meet with the steering committee and work with them on the implementation plan, and then work with all the department heads as well, so we can go into the transparency aspect like Raffatellis has just stated. So I think that's something that we're looking from, from administrative standpoint. I think that would be nice for me to have a little bit of control in kind of the direction that that's going.
Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, on the steering, on the steering committee, all we were thinking is to help Derek move along, because Derek's coming in this behind, months behind. And then it'll be up to Derek and staff to then move and be transparent with the commission.
I would like to, if I may, suggest that we take a period of time that the commission work with Derek on implementing these changes. It's kind of nice to have Raffatellis come in and look at us and give us a report, and then we need to get the mirror out and look at ourselves in the mirror with the overview of what Michelle and James have recommended to us and integrate those things in a deliberate manner. And when I say deliberate, there's things that I think that the five of us can agree that we need to do, but not until the new administrator has a chance to administer the business. Sometimes county government's a little different than maybe what our administrator is used to, because the manager runs everybody. And here we have elected officials that we need to integrate into Raffatellis' recommendations. And so while each of you have expressed really good ideas today, Michelle and James and Commissioner Oates and Commissioner Gurman, what I'd like to do is have the committee continue to focus with Derek during this period of time, but during our second meeting in January, we're going to reorganize this commission. And the then-chairman will have to set the agenda as to what review and process that we are doing and prioritizing and setting goals. And this recommendation is to set those goals early in the year, well in advance of when we get to budgeting in April, May, and June. So I can't predict what that reorganization is going to look like, but I think that trying to make a decision today is something that we should avoid. We should take the opportunity to soak in what Raffatellis is telling us, continue to provide the opportunity for transition with Derek in the new position, and then have a plan for the commission on reorganization in the second meeting in January, to start working on the planning and implementation of these goals. And if we need work sessions in between now and then, Madam Vice Chair, that's something we can do. We can do it as a group. We can continue to let the executive committee continue to work on formulating those recommendations. I hope that that would provide us the structure that we need. Also, we have to keep in mind that we are affecting employees, and we need to have a plan before we announce what that plan is. And I would like to thank once again, Michelle and James for their work. With that, are there any further additional comments on the Raffatellis presentation? Because I think we're looking at reorganizing this commission and moving forward. If there needs to be work sessions, we'll do those as needed in December and January. We got kind of a full plate, the first two meetings in November. Anything else, commissioners? Any final comments from Raffatellis? Michelle?
Thank you very much, and we certainly wish all of you the best of luck as you continue to work through this report and, and these recommendations. I appreciate the comments about needing to take a little bit of time. We know there's a lot in this report. Thirty-five recommendations is, is quite a lot, and each one of them will take, they're on top of the existing work of an already busy and resource-constrained organization. And so I just encourage all of you to have just an ounce of patience with the organization as it works to, with the new administrator, to review this report in detail, begin to operationalize, and then certainly work with each of you in what that implementation will look like.
Sometimes we get, in any business or organization, we get ingrained in our structure. And I see this report as a, taking one of those machines of a good sturdy walnut tree and giving it a shake. And good things happen when you don't overshake the tree. And at the same time, without change, there's one sure thing in, in, in my opinion about public service, is if we say that's the way we always done it, that's what the captain of the Titanic said, and it didn't work out so well for him. So I want to, once again, thank you for being the machine that shakes the tree. And also, hopefully, Michelle and James, you'll be available for Derek should he circle back and have questions. I do want to ask for your input.
Absolutely. We, we are always available to, to support as needed.
All right. With that, we'll conclude our presentation today and say thanks once again, and we'll return back to our agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Yes, we're going to take a short break and...
We need to, on the Raffatellis group, do we want to accept, we need to make a motion to accept it.
We'll do that after a break. We're going to take a break now, and we'll reconvene at nine thirty-five. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We left off with a recommendation from Commissioner Oates to make a motion as to the acceptance of the organizational and staff analysis review by Raftalas. Commissioner, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we accept the organizational scan report as presented and direct staff as to the next steps.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the report and direct staff as to the next steps. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. Now, we will hear from Economic Development. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Lawn and Develop, Finney County Economic Development. Several things we can update you on this week. We are working on a lot of housing opportunities, which is exciting. It's good to see people starting to get re-engaged in the idea of development, so we're excited about that. The site work has kind of preliminarily begun on the Sand Sage development, which is the development generally behind the theater over on Palace Drive, so we're very excited to get that project underway. That's been a long time coming, but we're seeing some dirt move. We are going to have a, potentially have a groundbreaking ceremony. We'll let you know if we're able to get that put together with the developers, or if they just want to keep moving and we can go stand in front of a bulldozer.
Are we allowed to interrupt at any time during your presentation?
You can throw things, interrupt, tell me to sit down. You can do anything you want.
Is that the particular project? Is that the one with retail on the bottom floor and apartment?
Yeah, it was the location we intend, initially, we're going to put that mixed-use development on. This is not. This is just apartments that are currently going there. The mixed-use development has been site planned into a different area that's opening up for development where we'll have more space to allow that footprint to be a little bigger and allow for a little additional parking and some additional retail that we think would be interested in that spot. So, yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions on that project? That is the MIH ARPA project, so that's the one that we were able to secure a couple of million from the state of Kansas when they did the moderate income housing program. So, pretty exciting project.
Well, that's an area that's just been waiting for development, and I'm glad that there's dirt moving out there. And before, I'm interrupting your presentation, but we have dirt work where the radio tower used to be coming across that outfit. I understand that's a Casey's store?
That is a Casey's.
And then we have dirt work of tire works out on Schulman Crossing. What is that store?
The Discount Tire, yeah. So, lots going on out there. It's good to see those projects coming to fruition. And there is another half, basically, to the lot where Casey's is located, and we've had some discussion with some potential retail for that location as well. So, and I think that spot will fill up pretty quickly. That'll kind of be the end of Schulman expansion as we get that stuff landed, and we have additional commercial projects underway now that we'll talk about in a minute.
Okay, why don't you get that?
If you'd like me to continue, sir.
I was going to say something about the Sports of the World stuff seems to be getting towards conclusion. Is it, is there an opening date on it?
It's opening in November, whether they're ready or not, they said. They have a wedding booked. And there's nothing like booking a wedding to force you to finish up the project, right? So, yeah, they'll be opening mid-November. Very excited to get going with that. So, it's an incredible project. We're very proud to have that in the community and really excited to see the partnerships that they're forming and the, I think, the attraction opportunities that their management company will bring to the community. So, very excited about that.
All right, get back on schedule. Go.
All righty, back on it. So, we do have several projects underway. We're visiting with a couple of hotel projects, which, to the point of the Sports of the World complex getting opened up, are going to be very, very important to us. We are short on hotels. Shannon and I ran an analysis a couple of weeks ago, and we're somewhere between 300 and 600 rooms short in the community right now. And then that's only taken a portion of the new refinery opportunities into account, so absolutely need to be focused on additional hotel development, which, again, we've got some good leads on that, and you'll be hearing more about a couple of projects in that regard very soon. A couple of large ag projects, which is very exciting. It's good to see those projects that have kind of been in waiting mode, ready to move forward. Same with industrial. Couple of pretty good-sized industrial opportunities and expansions that we're working with existing businesses on. The truck wash project's still waiting to get going. Can't really do much with them until everything is resolved with the former Northwest Industrial District, which is challenging for them. They've got money, you know, going out every month and aren't able to actually gain any income to offset those expenses. So, I know they're frustrated, but they're being very good to continue to work with us patiently while the county works through that. Additional commercial opportunities, good conversations happening, both with individual retailers and restaurants, as well as with developers. So, we anticipate that we'll see some pretty good expansion in that area over the next couple of years. Again, it's encouraging to see business starting to either decide that interest rates are going to be what they're going to be, and they just need to go while they can go, or they actually are feeling optimistic that things are going to settle out and there's a good opportunity. So, we like to tell them, we don't care which it is, just, let's just get projects done. And then renewables. As you are aware, we have really good projects going on with some of the renewables, and those opportunities are going to be exciting for the community. You're going to have a lot of things that have to be decided over the next several months, but we feel confident that we're on the right path, and we've got some really good partners that are working with the community on that. Workforce development, we, as your operational study just talked about, are, again, continue to be short on folks to fill positions within the county. Somewhere, again, around 3,000 to 4,000 opportunities here with very few people to fill those, and not enough housing units to house the folks we would need to recruit into the community. So, we continue to work through those issues. On workforce, we do have some really good higher education discussions continuing with Newman, Kansas State, and KU, and working with the Western Kansas Career Showcase, the Economic Development Organization, you know, again, renewed our membership with that organization. Also, working on a really cool higher paths program, which is with middle school students. Previously, it's only been done at Hayes High School and Manhattan High School, so they're expanding into Garden City this year. They had reached out to us, and we're working with the administration at USD 457 to get that going. Big undertaking, but a great opportunity to expose middle schoolers to the kinds of careers that are available to them and the kinds of education that we're bringing to them in order to prepare them for those, for those career pathways. So, we're excited about that. And then lastly, I'll just mention that, as you are all aware, I'm sure, it is political season in Kansas, and we are very fortunate. We've had a lot of opportunities to meet with statewide office candidates and share information about the region. Really appreciate that our representatives, specifically Senator Clifford and Representative Lewis, are very aware of the amount of data and the amount of information we can provide to those statewide candidates. So, it's been very nice to have them promoting the idea of those folks making the trip out here and sitting down with us. We've had several hours worth of discussion with some of those candidates, and the more they can know about the things happening in our region, I think the better we all are. So, happy to answer any additional questions you may have if I've missed anything.
Commissioners?
Great report.
Madam President, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
We'll hear from Mackenzie Phillips.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So, this morning, the Board of County Commissioners is asked to waive the $2 per ton municipal waste fee for the 2025 river cleanup. Finney County Public Works has received a request to assist in the Community 2025 River Cleanup Program by waiving the $2 per ton municipal waste fee. The 2025 River Cleanup will be held on Saturday, November 15th, 2025, and since the Finney County landfill is closed on weekends, any debris collected during the cleanup will be transported to the landfill on Monday, November 17th. So, as a reminder, Finney County receives a $2 per ton municipal waste fee from the landfill. Waste Connection sends this money to the county on a quarterly basis. The county has waived this fee for the community cleanups in the past. So, you have two alternatives for you this morning. First, the Board of County Commissioners may approve the waiver of the $2 per ton municipal waste fee for the 2025 river cleanup, or the board may not approve the waiver of the, for the 2025 river cleanup. And staff recommends alternative one to waive the fee.
Questions, Commissioner?
No questions, but I'll make a motion if you'd like.
Any inquiry?
No. I think, great, great program.
I move that we approve the waiver of the $2 per ton municipal waste fee for the 2025 river cleanup.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve alternative number one. As stated in the well-worded motion, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's clean up the river.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mackenzie.
All these gentlemen and architect, young lady from Kansas City, been waiting a long time today for their presentation and for the viewing public. I'll let them introduce. And I would also yield to Commissioner Baske to give his 10 cents view from the top before we start into this review of the EMS building progress.
I think, I think we talked about this when we had our meeting out at the trailer the other day, that you had required me to give a report today, but I found these gentlemen and young lady to do that presentation for me. So, I kind of lucked out with that, that you guys were appearing today to formally do that for me. Thank you.
Happy to help. For standing in for Senior, who is the Commissioner assigned to this project, and sir, you have the floor.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioners and Chairman Schultz. My name is Andy Farmire with Hutton. I am the project team leader on the county EMS and Health Department project. I'm going to take a second and let the rest of our team introduce themselves, and then we'll get into the presentation.
Good morning. I'm Alexi Rojas. I'm the project manager.
And I'm Alec Coast, the superintendent for this project.
Hi, everyone. Sidney Goldberg with Goldberg Group Architects, representing our team today. Kevin Rost and Coleman Babcock have also been the project architects in the weeds on the day-to-day.
I will say real quick, though, these folks are very, very impressive about what they do and what they know. So, when I attended the meeting for Senior, I was very impressed that we have these folks on board to handle this project for us.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to take the opportunity to be the chair for just a second and dovetail this into something which is really important to me as an individual Commissioner, and the policy of this commission as a whole is our Western Kansas showcases. Now, I know you're here to give me an update, or us, the commission, an update, and I appreciate that, but as you can see, the Western Kansas showcase is integrated into economic development and also into this project. And so, my question is, is in December, do you think you're going to be ready for the showcase?
Yeah, I actually saw Joe Coles last week. We were doing a career showcase up in Scott City and got a chance to talk to him and do some just early discussions, but we're really looking forward to it. It's going to be, I believe, December 12th?
Fourth.
Fourth, okay, sorry. But it'll be in December, and I believe there's about, going to be about 150 or 60 students that are going to be touring our job site, as well as two other sites that day here in Finney County. We really look forward. We've, I think, what that career showcase organization has done over the years, bringing awareness to not only our industry of construction, but other industries throughout Western Kansas, and really letting our students know that there are, you know, viable long-term career opportunities here to, in professional careers is really, really wonderful, and we're really excited to showcase the job. We're going to kind of stop work for the day, that day, and we've asked some of our trade partners to kind of give booths, per se, where they can kind of talk specifically about their trade. And so, when those students are touring the job site, they're not only getting a chance to see the job site as a whole, but to talk specifically about some of those individual trades within it. So... So we're really looking forward to hosting them that day.
Well, I took up some of your time and I really want to thank you for supporting and being involved in the showcase program. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for allowing us time this morning to come and just give you a project update. This project started back in the first week of April. So we're roughly about one-third the way through construction. We just feel like this is a really great opportunity to come in and kind of give you an update as to where we're at, talk about the work that's been done today, and then answer any questions. So with that, I'm going to let Alexi lead off here and talk about just a few numerical facts for the job and then roll into some other details.
Good morning, everyone. And just as you can see here on the slideshow, this site started off as a green site, just a little bit above over 3.12 acres. The Health Department EMS facility is divided up into two halves. The north half is the Health Department coming in around 19, a little bit over 19,000 square feet. The EMS facility is going to be a little bit over 9,000 square feet, giving you an overall footprint of 28,315 square feet. We also have around 6,000, 60,547 square feet of pavement in this project. A little bit of financial overview on this project. You'll see two numbers here on the left. This is our preliminary budget that we did around the 75% set of drawings. We gave you guys a budget, an estimate of $12,972,000. And you'll see an asterisk here that it mentions, at this point in the project, we did not include the underground storm sewer detention system. We added this once the design was finalized and we got, we got approved to move forward to the 100% set of drawings. We estimated that underground storm sewer detention system to come in around $200,000 or so. Once we put this project out to bid, a culmination of subs coming in under budget as well as some of the alternates that we included in the GMP, we were able to offset that $200,000 cost of the storm water detention system and give you a guaranteed max price of $12,983,000. So we came in just $10,000, a little bit over budget from the original estimate, but we were able to include that stormwater detention system and believe gave you guys an additional 16 spaces of parking in that lot. After this GMP price that we gave you, we also worked with some of our subcontractors and the architects to find you some additional savings. And you'll see that here. And then for the additional save, cost savings after the GMP, we were able to take those savings and move those to an owner contingency, owner contingency pocket and give you guys some additional funds for this project. And here about some, three cool facts on this project that we had. One was the underground storm sewer detention system. You'll see here, it takes up about 15,000 square feet in your parking lot, on the north side of the parking lot. Holds about 90,000 gallons of water here. So it's going to meet all your drainage needs for this project. It's, yeah, so it's just, it's one of two in the city that I remember, if I remember that correctly. The only other one is on the Maverick Gas Station. So that's pretty cool. Second thing here is a lightweight insulated concrete roof system. This is just going to give you lifetime durability, bringing costs, future cost savings for whenever you have to replace the roof. You're not going to have to, you're just going to have to tear off the TPO. You're not going to have to have any other additional substrate there. And then the third one is the continuous insulation system. Meets all the up-to-date building codes. I believe it has a R value of nine, of 9.8. And it's going to give you a fully insulated building envelope. So it's just going to be, it's a great system to install in your building here.
For my portion of this update, I'll hit on safety and scheduling. So when it comes to safety for this project, if you could go back real quick, sorry. Safety for this project, we've had zero recordable incidents to date. I can't take all the credit for this. We've had some great subcontractors on site. They've really bought into our safety procedures. And one of the other safety procedures and policies we've implemented for this project is nothing hits the ground. And as you can see here in the picture, so what nothing hits the ground means is nothing within the building is stored on the ground. So all materials are either up on carts or on pallets. And then all of the tool carts we've had around the job sites can be moved from one work area to the next. And it's kind of hard to see in the picture, but now the interior wall frames, framing has been started. Extension cords are also up off the ground. So this isn't just a safety procedure. It promotes cleanliness, which also promotes quality. And that's the main reason we decided to implement this nothing hits the ground policy for this project. And now onto scheduling. On every one of my projects, our goal is always to hit the ground running and really gain as many days from the beginning as possible to mitigate any unforeseen delays, whether it's weather or whatnot. And we've really done a great job on this project of making up days and gaining days from the very beginning. And so as you can see here, this is our very high level milestone schedule we put together. And that shows our slab on grade originally planned start date was in late July. And as you can see here, we actually started it in late June and completed early. For the structural steel, we also were planning to, we're also planning to begin in the middle of August and we were able to push that date up as well to the beginning of August. With, and that gets us to where we are at now. Building envelope, we were planning to start that in early September and we were able to start in late August, which gets us to where we're at now. We are about four weeks ahead of schedule to date. And with that, my plan is to allocate two additional weeks to our finishes schedule because on every project, it's always a push at the end and you're stacking a bunch of trades up. And to avoid all of that, two additional weeks will give us plenty of time to really work through finishes and give you guys a beautiful building. With that being said, we've also moved up the turnover date, the owner move-in date, to the middle of September of 2026 instead of that September 30th date.
I have the benefit of knowing Alexi, forget that he grew up and went to high school here and played football here, but could you help me with your name again, sir?
Sorry, yes, my name is Alec Coast.
Alec Coast. And where'd you go to high school, sir?
Simaron.
Simaron.
Yes, sir.
Another local Southwest Kansas student involved in trade construction.
Yes, I grew up in Simaron, went to college at K-State. And then I've moved back, I moved to Garden here about two and a half years ago.
Wonderful, thank you. And Commissioners, do you have questions at this point? Sorry for the interruption, but I just, it's just really wonderful that Andy has brought you guys in on this project and how it fits so well with the showcases. And what a wonderful example you make for the kids that are coming in and looking at the showcases and this project and the information that you're giving to us. Thank you very much, and please finish.
I look forward to the showcase as well. I really love showing off our projects. I believe next we have a cool video to kind of show you guys the project. So this pro, or video is taken about a week and a half ago. You see the east side of the building here. So the ambulance bay is there on the left with the two big garage doors. To exit the ambulance bay, you can see we've got the parking lot sub base already started around the east and north sides of the building. You can see the roof is already on that ambulance bay. And the, while this video is being taken, we were actually about halfway done installing that lightweight concrete roof. And as it moves around here to the backside of the building, where the dumpster and the skid steer are sitting, there'll be a patio area for the EMS living quarters, which is that big window and soffited area. You can also notice our privacy screen on the temporary fence that surrounds the whole project site. This has really boosted our security and safety for the project. And as we move around here to the west side, you can see that, at the time this video was taken, the waterproofing, which is the bluish gray on the lower half of the building, was about halfway complete. This is part of our building envelope system. And then as we move around here to the north side of the building, you can really see the parking lots taking shape with that drive-through. And then within that orange fenced-in areas where that picture was taken earlier of the stormwater system, it is all buried there beneath the parking lot. So this is, this will be the front view of the building. Like I said, we've, we've made really great progress to date and it's, it's really taking shape. The building is really looking great.
All right, and then I think the next slide, yeah, we get to see our rendering, our early rendering of the finished product. And Commissioner Baske, I know you said you got off easy, but I really got off easy because I'm up here with Hutton. And they've been such a phenomenal partner on the project. The county also has been incredible to work with. In the public sector, you always expect some turnover of positions, right? And so we've worked with several different people. Everyone has just been fantastic, focused on putting together a project that's really going to serve the community. And we're, we're so proud to have been a part of this so far, excited to continue the work. So we do have a couple of things we're working on in the background in addition to working with Hutton day-to-day on construction questions. We're finalizing furniture layouts for, excuse me, fixtures and equipment ordering, which for both the Health Department and the EMS side, you know, there's a fair bit of equipment there that we want to make sure is installed and ready to go September 16th, 2026. And then I just wanted to mention, as we continue on in the project and get closer to that end date, we're available to help put materials together to share with the public whatever you all may need. Coordination with, for an open house, things like that, as that becomes appropriate. You all have a great team here, but you also wear a lot of hats. You, you guys are already very busy and so whatever we can do to assist, that's, that's part of my job and please let us know.
Who owns the video that we saw during this presentation?
Um, Hutton owns the first one, we own the second one, and we're happy to share those with the county.
I will ask you and Andy if it's okay if, if the clerk has the opportunity to post that video to our website.
Yeah, oh, we would love that. And we'll, I'll maybe set up a SharePoint link, Dory, because it's a big file size and then you can grab it off of that. And you'd be able to upload your video as well. Okay, easy, yeah, we would be honored.
Because that is, it's impressive. And I really want you to know that maintaining the budget, schedule and including the community participation and getting the community into this building is a priority and continued good work and zero safety problems, sir. Am I right? Thank you, that's a good job and it's a credit to the subs who are working on this project. Anything else, Commissioners? Any final remarks, Andy?
I just, I just want to thank the commission. You guys have always really attend all of our, we call them OAC, Owner Architect Contractor, bi-weekly meetings. It's been great to have that level of engagement. Your county staff has really been, been wonderful working through this project. You know, I want to commend Goldberg for their efforts because as we talked about, those early gains, those pushes that Alec and Alexi were so focused on trying to gain early. In order to start things like footings, steel erection, we also have to be able to get quick turnarounds on material, material approvals and such. So it's a, it's a team effort to be able to do those things on the front end. And, and so we've worked really, I think, the Goldberg team and Hutton have been able to work really well together and, and really give us that opportunity to make those gains. And, and we just really enjoyed this, this project and it was a pleasure to come share it with you this morning.
Thank you, we appreciate it. We'll look forward to next update in six months or so.
Sounds great, thank you.
All right, we will, that ends our business agenda. We'll go into staff reports. We'll first hear from Mackenzie Phillips.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I have one update for you this morning of Spirit, for Spirit Acres. It did go before the planning commission last week and was recommended for approval with the conditions that it does, they do address some of the items that were brought up in the site plan review and they did bring up one other comment about the, the surveyor that was listed as setting the, the corners on the, on the plat was wrong. So they added that to the recommendation as well. So you won't be seeing that at the next meeting. We're still working on a few things, but that will be coming up here soon. And that's all I have for you this morning.
Very good questions.
I don't have a question about that, but last week I was contacted by a company that wants to do a proposed wind turbine farm here. But, and I told them to get in contact with you, I can't remember now what their name is. But the, he was mentioning that what we're zoned for, regulated for is the smaller wind turbines and theirs are the bigger ones. So I told him, you know, that he would need to contact you and then for you to study that and then bring that in front of us if we need to do some type of a waiver or something like that. So just giving you a heads up that you may be contacted by that particular company that I can't recall what the name of.
Thank you, Commissioner Baske.
Thank you, Mackenzie. We'll continue on our agenda with a report from the county clerk. Is there anything we need to go over?
No, sir. We've just provided you with the department monthly reports.
Commissioners, do you have any questions with regard to monthly reports? If not, we'll move into the administrators' report. Sir, you have the floor.
I'd like to ask Director of Building Maintenance and Special Projects, Nolan Till, to come up and give an update on the VRF project.
Wonderful. You're new, so you have to announce for the viewing public.
I know, I got it down now. Nolan Till, Director of Building Maintenance and Special Projects. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. The VRF project, starting to cool down out there, so we're not noticing it quite as much, maybe just more sound. But it is moving actually on pace or maybe even a little ahead of schedule. Currently, the Project A, which is this building and the library, they should begin their last bit of equipment in, I think, today. And with that, we're probably a little over 50% complete for that project. Some really good news, Tetro is working on that project. And they think they'll be turning over the library here maybe the first week of November. So the library side of that project, hopefully by first week, second week in November. Heating and AC, and that should be hopefully complete on that site. As for this building, we're looking at first week of December, most likely. We can have a heat and AC working here in this building. That project, like I said, moving along really well. They haven't ran into any issues, which is good. Budget's still on schedule. Project B is probably just about to 50%. They're moving a little slower. For those that are familiar with the courthouse, it's a very old building and the chases are a lot smaller. It's a little harder to work around. Currently, they're going, working in courtroom 301. That's the big courtroom in there, which they have to add all kinds of scaffolding just to get up into the ceiling, adding duct work in there as well. And then we did run into a little issue, for those that are familiar. Courtroom 300, it's the, be the south, third floor, southeast corner. That courtroom has a different type of ceiling. Nobody really is sure why that ceiling's so different, but we've ran into a few issues trying to get in there and change it up a little bit. So it did slow them down a bit, but they still think the overall.
That courtroom was a remodel.
Oh, okay, so that's what it is, yeah.
That's why it has a different ceiling.
Yeah, and we've had it, they're going to have to pull out some current duct work to get our new duct work in there and new equipment in there as well. But working with the courtroom staff, Menaces in particular, we're just moving around court cases and everything like that. So they've been super helpful there. But Central Consolidated, we'll start working at the But Central Consolidated will start working at the attorney's building. They wanted to get a good start on that courthouse first off. And the attorney's building is more like an office setting, so it should move a lot quicker. But that will get started here in November, and they're still on pace for about mid-December to have their project completed. But I can answer any questions. I think in that report that Dory sent to you, I gave our weekly updates in there. But if you have any questions, I can continue to send those to you as well.
Questions, commissioners? If not, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Nolan.
Continue, sir?
That is all I have this morning.
Questions for the administrator? Make sure I don't miss, get corrected. Madam Clerk, the upcoming meetings and events and schedule. There we go.
Yeah, nothing specific. I would just point out that early voting started today, and we'll go on for the next two weeks. And we've got a couple of special hours. Tuesday will be open until 7:00 PM. That's usually helpful for some of the teachers and people that work eight to, eight to five or eight to four and can't get in here during the day. And then we have a Saturday where we're here from 10:00 to 2:00 on a Saturday, which we've seen a lot of people take advantage of as well. So we hope those extended hours give everybody an opportunity to get out and vote early if that's what they choose to do.
Well, I'm very thankful that you're willing and your volunteers are willing to work those extra hours to give people the opportunity to vote. And once again, Election Day is November 4th this year, and you have all the opportunity for ballots. What, what's the deal on mail-in ballots? Could you explain to the public how they get one of those?
There's an application to fill out if you would like a mail ballot. That can usually be downloaded online, filled out, and dropped at our office. There's some places that will also do online applications where those can be submitted to us. When we receive that, we will process it, put the ballot in the mail with the instructions for completing and returning the ballot. And that's something that voters can actually track online. When they've submitted an application, they can see that their application's been received. They can see when their ballot has been mailed out, and they can also see when we receive their ballot back. All of that gets tracked in the system. So it's kind of a one-for-one. One ballot goes out, one ballot comes back, so.
Okay, and if I remember correctly, canvassing of that vote will occur on November 17, and we may have one or more commissioners that are absent that day, and the commission will need to appoint someone for, to sit as a board of canvassers, correct?
Correct.
And so if any commissioner is going to be gone on that day, we need to make sure that we have that person here to be elected as a canvasser on the 17th.
As a reminder, we will do the initial canvas at 8:30 AM, and that is where we review the provisional ballots. Then we'll go down in process and then come back up with the final results. So it, it will be an extended period of time. It's not just 15 minutes.
Right.
Just to make that clear for anybody that's going to sit in, that they understand that commitment.
Right. Well, I, I'll ask Derek to make sure that Senior's aware of the 17th, and if he's going to be gone, Kevin's going to be gone, and so we can't have any other vacancies in order to have a courtroom. So that being said, make sure that if Senior's going to be gone on the 17th, we have another person to sit on the board of canvassers.
Will do.
Thank you. Anything else for the clerk?
No, sir.
Commissioners, anything for the clerk?
No.
Very good. Thank you for the report. Is there any need for executive session? All right, very good. Commissioner reports? We'll go left to right.
Last couple of weeks, did several presentations on the law enforcement center and the jail. Great turnout at the senior center and RSVP. That was a good group, good questions. One thing I would ask the public, if, between now and voting time, if someone needs a presentation to reach out to either the clerk or the county administrator's office, and we will be happy to present. I think we got it down pat. We've answered a lot of good questions. I will be attending the Great Plains Development Incorporated Annual Board Meeting on October 29th at 4:30 in Dodge City. And I've also been invited and will attend, I've been invited by Congressman Tracy Mann to sit in on the Military Academy Selection Committee in Abilene on October 31st, pending whether or not the government reopens. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Baske?
I did do one presentation at Jenny Wilson School. It was nice. That's my alma mater. If you can have a grade school alma, alma mater on the sales tax presentation. I also gave closing remarks for the showcase that was down at the exhibition building for, I think that was the one for public offices and jobs. It was very well attended. I was very pleased to see that, and so I'm very excited about future showcases that come Also gave some brief opening remarks at the benefits, the county's benefits fair the other day at the same location. Had a fair board meeting last week, and I'm excited for them about improving the experience of the Fannie County Fair involving those parts of the fair, including 4-H members, about continuing to make that a better experience and hopefully us as a commission and us as a county can continue to improve the facilities down there for those attendees and helping to continue making that a bigger and better fair in the future. So that's all I have.
Vice Chairman?
I attended the Builders Association luncheon this month. I also attended the staff in-service, and that was, that was really a good presentation. It's a nice thing to give the employees time to visit with our providers and ask questions. You know, if, if there's something that they're wanting to do different, I think that was a really good idea. Some really good speakers as well, so I was, I was impressed. I also attended the chamber breakfast, heard the state of the city, which was really good. Some great information there from the mayor and from Matt Allen. I did attend the planning commission meeting. It was kind of a long meeting, but some, a lot of good things come out of that. Just like to remind everybody, our next homeless encampment meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM in Classroom B. Anybody here or in the audience or the, the, actually anybody within our listening community, if you're interested in participating, you are welcome to attend. We're making some really good progress, excited about some of the upcoming things, and we're, I think we're pretty close to having a name for our group, so I'll keep you posted on that. I'd also like to give a shameless plug for the Garden City Community College-Gurman Homes Partnership. That's going really well. It's so good to see those students out there, and they are excited that they're actually able to participate in building a house. We are also participating in the Western Kansas showcases event on December 4th, so that, that group will be coming through this house that the community college is helping to build. So I'm very excited about that. And that's all I have.
I want to say thank you to Gurman Homes for providing that opportunity for the showcase. It might have been a shameless note to them, but it was one for the community and community efforts and the donation of time and services to support the showcase is really appreciated. Also to Commissioner Baske, who volunteered or voluntold, however you want to say it, to participate with Hutton in the upcoming presentation that, or past presentation that was made today. That was impressive, and Commissioner Baske, thank you for stepping up in the absence of Senior who's been monitoring that. And my, my report on that is, is that yes, the price tag of the building is large, but we made some transfers from essentially savings accounts of general fund monies that had been made by prior administrator, but those transfers, along with the quarter cent sales tax, is providing the funds to build that building. That is not an ad valorem tax-paid building. And I want people to know that that is another opportunity to demonstrate what sales tax revenue can do for our community without raising the ad valorem tax rate. The report that I have is that I sit on Compass's board, and we meet monthly. Tremendous growth of that organization for the benefit of our community. And mental health services, they are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is brand-new to our community since the CCHBC designation of Compass in, in 2024. So as that service is expanded, their building project right now on Fulton Street is nearing completion, at least from the outside looking in. As we all know, there's a lot of work to do inside the building, but that's quite an improvement on Fulton Street by Compass Behavioral Health. The Raftellus report will take us some time to digest, so to speak, and to implement. There's some really good things that are in that report, and I'm sure we'll work on those in the weeks and months to come. Most people don't plan to fail. They fail to plan. So we need to make sure that we're doing the things that Raftellus is telling us by shaking the tree and causing us to make the effort to implement a good plan for everyone. The, so we got a work session following today briefly about resolutions on wind farms and solar farms, which will be an interesting opportunity for all of us to be more informed. Then as far as commission meetings, we will meet on the third in regular session, 17th regular session, December 1 and 15, which finishes out the year unless there's a work session that's required. As we work together to digest the stuff from Raftellus, we may work, do that in work session or continue to allow the committee to work on that in preparation for next year's reorganization and budgeting. Any other comments or business before the commission, commissioners?
No, sir.
Mr. Administrator? Madam Counselor? Motion to adjourn, Vice Chairman?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moving second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.